Like to welcome everybody to the meeting, call this meeting of order, planning commission to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Callum.
Here.
Ms. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Yeah.
Mr. Soder.
Here.
Chairman Greenwood.
Here. Next on the agenda, we have the review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Have any ever had a chance to look over it? It is an amended agenda. Hope everybody got that today.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask for question in reference to the agenda.
Um.
Um, I noticed I just paid attention to six A being listed under public hearing. And I believe we closed, formally closed the public hearing on CUP O four twenty-two two when our last meeting. Should that actually be referenced as unfinished business? We can, we've attempted. Because we won't actually have another formal. Opportunity for citizens to speak as far as that CUP is concerned.
Right, it is under, under public hearing, so it really shouldn't because we already had that. I didn't catch that, yes.
Right, I just paid attention to it myself.
Okay.
So I, I would make a motion that we could adopt the amended agenda with the addition of moving CUP O four twenty-two A. Um, which is six, currently six A to seven, uh, under unfinished business.
Okay. Does anyone have any problems with that? Any other additions or changes? Did you want to make a motion on that this morning?
Uh, uh.
Oh, that was your motion? Okay. I go have a sec, I'll second. I go have a motion made promptly second for an amended amended agenda with changing the six A moving that to seven A. Since we already had the public hearing on that last time, we just tabled the discussion. Uh, any other discussion on that? Seeing none, uh. Good, a roll call.
Ms. Hyde.
I.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we have the move approval of the meeting minutes for March fourteenth, regular meeting and the March fourteenth work session that we had directly after. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes for March fourteenth, regular meeting and work session.
Second. Motion made promptly seconded. Any other discussions? Seeing none, a roll call.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Soder.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde.
Ah.
Chairman Greenwood.
Hi. Next item we have on the agenda, citizen's comment period, which is one opportunity of three minutes per individual on non-public hearing matters. Tonight, we have only one. Public hearing, which is on the Coho Club. So if you have any other issues besides that. You can speak in public and citizens' comment here. Keep forgetting we changed the name. Uh, open the. Citizens' comment here and just come forward and state your name and your address. Uh, that'd be great.
I'm Jessica Budd. I live at one, two, four Central Crossing Terrace. My understanding is that you will not be taking any more. Public hearing on the conditional use permit for the apartments at Central Garage, the Central Apartments. Um, I know there are a number of people here today to speak on that project and. We were hoping that it, it seemed to be the understanding from the last meeting that there were going to be some changes to the project to accommodate some of the concerns from the fire department. Hopefully also the residents' concerns. We would love to have had an opportunity to respond to whatever changes the project would be undertaking or whatever the new form would be. But in light of that, I'd like to use this opportunity to address the, the application for the conditional use permit.
That would work just fine because like I said, you didn't know that we weren't going to have it. So it would be perfect opportunity.
Thank you.
Still have the three months to speak.
Thank you very much, sir.
Sure.
Um, I come before you again to ask you to oppose the conditional use permit. I won't full labor the points that I raised at the last meeting. I know your time is valuable. Um, I'd just like to raise a couple of issues that I noticed from the last meeting. The first of them is that it was shared that the county recommends approval of the project because this type of housing, the one-bedroom apartments is needed in the county as consistent with the twenty forty-one comprehensive plan. Uh, I have a couple of concerns about that. First, it's my understanding that over the past several months, this commission has approved several new projects centered around Route thirty. And three sixty that will bring hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of housing opportunities of all types to the area. None of those developments are next to existing residential housing, especially not in the manner in which this proposed development is immediately next to within feet of. People's homes such as mine. I asked then, why has this apparent housing need not been addressed in any of the other developments that have already come before you? Why is the county recommending building this high-density multi-family dwellings, the clubhouse, the pool, and the three hundred fifty-seven parking spaces immediately next to our existing homes? This is a unique situation compared to the other developments and ask you to take that into consideration. I also ask you to consider how that's good land use planning. Of all the places to put this, why next to existing residential homes that it will be severely impacting? Uh, additionally, they're not an unfinished apartment project directly across the street from the central crossing neighborhoods. I'm. I'm curious why the apparent housing need hasn't been met there, uh, which again would not impact existing homes. And I conclude by reminding you of your role to be a neutral arbiter of the facts in deciding whether to grant this special exception. To the housing or to the zoning ordinance, which is residential suburban, this would be a special exception for this project. Please be a neutral fact finder in deciding whether you're going to approve this project. The decision is in your hands. Please protect and make decisions with due regards to the existing residents and consider the impact that this will have. This will turn our homes upside down. This is going to severely impact our quality enjoyment of our homes that we've invested in. I ask you to please deny the application. And one more thing before I step down. I wanted to mention that another neighbor from our neighborhood, uh, could not be here tonight and reached out to ask me to share that he also has concerns. His name is Matt Cooper. Thank you again for your time. Have a great evening.
We have, are there other people here that maybe want to speak too, or?
Good evening. My name is Amy Creach and I live at one, one, eight Central Crossing Terrace. Um, I have several concerns with this and most of them she mentioned. Um, my biggest concern is most of us on there have small children. And these are three-story apartment buildings. These people are going to be on their balconies. Looking down at our children, playing in our backyard, seeing our every move, everything we do. Um, it is supposed to be more of a private neighborhood and I feel like. This is just going to take so much of that from us and it is a really concern for the safety of our children. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Griffin and I live at one, two, zero Central Crossing Terrace. Um, I also agree with Amy and Jessica. Um, all of their concerns are very valid and support my concerns as well, but. Along with the three-story apartments, they're going to be seeing every move that we make that's. Then I think going to raise a high crime rate in the area, which I think is pretty low for the area now. Um, they're going to be watching every move. They're going to be watching our kids. Um, concerns with cameras. Um. And basically, as Jessica also said, there's. Tons of other property that these apartments could be built on instead of right behind the residence to. Have spent a lot of time in their house and. If they were to go sell their house again, the value is going to decrease because of these apartments. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Fenny and this is my wife, Deandra Fenny, and we have one twenty-seven Central Crossing Terrace. And we share some of the same concerns, one of them being with the children and the traffic bringing in more residents. My concern is when it's time for people to get to work, they're already rushing up thirty, then they're rushing on three sixty, so they're cut through the neighborhood. It's children outside playing, children outside waiting for the bus in the morning. And then the same thing in the evening when they're coming home, are they going to cut through their speeding, not, um. Uh, responding to the, the speed limit and, uh, potentially harm someone child that's, that's out there playing. Or someone walking their dog or someone jogging or something like that.
And also like Ms. Budd said, um. The housing, I guess, concern in the comprehensive plan, why isn't it being addressed somewhere else? Their apartments, unfinished apartments across the street. Um, there are more developments coming up, but this particular development is right on our property. So please. Give that some consideration. We all have young children coming up. We've invested money, time into this property. So please think about it. And now, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on public citizens' comment period? Do we have anyone online waiting or? Seeing no one else, we will close the citizens' comment period. Now we will move into the public hearing. And this is for CUP dash zero, one dash twenty-three, the Coho Club Incorporated. Owner, Mr. Bill Allen is our applicant and has the same. Qualifications we have, uh, one opportunity of three minutes per individual. Uh, please come up, state your name and your address. Open the public hearing. I'll probably should wait till she had talked about it first.
That's okay. Um, so we do have Mr. Allen here and he also provided you with, um, some comments, uh, relating to his application. Um, he is here representing the Coho, um, club. They already have a, uh, boat house there now. They want to construct a, a safer boat house and. And they have one now that meets a criteria without, um, going for the CUP, but they do want to enclose it in. And they want to attach it to the existing one, which requires, uh, the CUP appro- approval. Um, this is located at one oh five four eight Mount Olive Cohoque Road. Um, it is in the AC district and it's located on a private pond. Um, therefore it does not require, uh, core VMRC or the local board approval because it's a, a private man-made pond. Um, you can see from the aerial, uh, where the pond goes and from what I understand, the Coho Club is the sole owner of the pond. And all of the property in that area is zoned to AC. Little bit better view of it there. And these are the construction detail of what they're planning to build. Uh, this is the structure that they, they've started. Um, like I said, they, they did it for an open, unenclosed. But they do want to put walls on it and, and close it in and attach it. And that is from the road. Um, and that's the existing structure that they have there now. I'll be glad to answer any questions and Mr. Allen is also here. Would you like to come up and speak a part?
Ladies and gentlemen, there's Eric. Wait till Mr. Allen speaks. Just waiting to see that.
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning committee. My name is Bill Allen. I am vice president of the Coho Club, the applicant for this conditional use permit, and I'm also a county resident. The Coho Club is a fish club. It has been a landowner in and a member of the King William County community for a hundred and twenty-three years. It's a very long time. We are requesting a conditional use permit to allow two specific improvements. To boat house addition that has already been approved and is already under construction. The new addition is being constructed adjacent, adjacent to an existing boat house. That has been in place for a very long time. We actually don't know what the original construction date was. The primary purpose of the boat house expansion is to enhance safety for some of our elderly members. Currently, the club uses narrow aluminum john boats, which can be somewhat unstable. The boat house expansion will have wider walkways, larger slips that will fit wider, more stable boats. First, we are requesting the allowance to add hard sides to two sides of the new structure. Adding sides to the boat house expansion is necessary to provide security for expensive batteries and other, other equipment. Hard sides will decrease the likelihood of the boats being an attractive nuisance. And it will be consistent with construction of the existing boat house. Second, we are requesting the allowance to physically tie the new addition into the existing boat house. Thus exceeding the seven hundred square foot size limitation imposed by the county. This will be achieved by installing small scripts of roof paneling and wall paneling. In our opinion, this will be virtually indistinguishable from the current plan of adjacent but separate structures. The Coho Mill Pond is a man-made freshwater, non-tidal water body entirely owned by the Coho Club. It is not accessible by the public or anyone who is not a member or accompanied by a member. The boat house does not pose any risk to boating navigation. Our boats are powered by small electric motors, which are incapable of propelling the boats at speeds. That might cause serious injury if potentially colliding with the boat house. Very unlikely that that would happen. The current boat house, in addition, cannot be seen from any surrounding residence other than the club's caretaker's house. The new addition can only be seen for a very short stretch of Route six thirty-two. For these reasons, we contend that the issuance of the conditional use permit by the county. Will not have any negative impact on the community or surrounding neighbors. And it will enhance the safety for our members and for the community. Therefore, we respectfully request that the county approve this permit. Thank you.
Do any board members have any questions for the applicant? I have a couple.
So I'm looking here on, on my app here and I see, uh, the main body of water, I guess, runs all the way up to the railroad tracks.
Beyond the railroad tracks as well.
So I'm seeing when you get above the railroad tracks, you do have some landowners that land actually comes down to the lake.
That's correct.
Now, do, do this, landowners who boarded the lake, do they have repairian rights to use the lake?
They do not.
Okay, so the club owns all the land all the way around the lake.
We own all the land under the lake. We do not own the land around the lake.
That's not exactly true either. Because we own land there and we own land to the center line of that lake because where grandfathered in, the original center line went. So we own the land, but we don't have rights to use the water.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That was a big lawsuit twenty years ago that we had to fight loss.
Okay, so the, the, the landowners that boarded the lake.
Yep, we can't even touch it.
Okay, so that's, that was settled. It's, it's the club has exclusive rights to the lake.
That's correct.
And the, the expansion of the boat house, um, I'm looking at the pictures here. It looks like it has a metal roof on it. What type of, what type of sightings on there?
Um, what's on the existing is a combination of several things. Uh, some of it is just, uh, blanks of cedar. Uh, some parts of it are corrugated, um. Metal, I assume, and I believe there's some, uh, T one eleven sighting on it, so.
And the, the poles that you guys have already put in, um, I actually wrote down and took a look at it from the road. I see the ones closer to the shoreline, the ones that are further south. What is the water depth out there where they're at?
About four feet.
Yeah.
And since, uh, those poles are longer than they will be, um, the roof line will be. Consistent with what's there, so it, it has already been done, but, um, those poles will be cut, you know, in comparison to what's in the picture there. Okay.
All the questions are there, Mr. W.
How many boats typically at one time, uh, are, are on that, uh, on that pond?
Um. You know, it varies quite a bit, uh, depending on the day of the week, the time of year, all that. On average, I would say that there's a boat once per day on average. Obviously, um. On the weekends, there could be five or six boats, uh, on the water.
It's like. I just had one, um, and this may be more for.
It's a series. On the water, but they're still in the boat house.
That's correct. I, I guess I was referring to in use. That was your question.
I guess, like you were saying, there was no, um. Rules that you have to go to DQ or any of that kind of stuff, but there aren't, I guess, any rules for setbacks or anything like that either because that is a private lake and everything. I guess that might be more shared. Since, or I just knew it was awfully close to, like I said, you see it when you travel around there, you almost, like I said, you could probably touch it almost. It's so close, but. That looks fine. That's all I have. I guess so. If the, maybe he might have more questions after we have the public hearing, if we have some people come up and discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. And now, since I already opened the public hearing, it is open, so we will accept comments now from anybody that has. Any comments, one period of three minutes for each individual. Please state your name and, or address. If you'd like to speak. Yeah, this, nobody wants to speak on this one. Okay, anybody online? No? Okay, well, looks like we don't have any. Citizens want to pick public hearing, so I will close the public hearing and we'll go back to board members' comments. Do we have any discussion or any ideas?
I have one question. I just wanted to ask, uh, the chairman, if anyone had reached out related to this condition.
We've had a couple of phone calls, um. Just inquiring on information about the public hearing, but nobody that spoke in favor or opposition. They were just asking questions. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Allen. Uh, Mr. Allen, you said you all own the water, own the pond, but not the surrounding properties. Where you have the boat house, between the boat house and the road, do you all own that? Okay, thank you. I had a concern initially about parking. They, they park across the street. They don't have a boat ramp there, so there's no need for parking or entrance or anything. It looks like the parking across the street is very well accommodated. Um. Looks like a good. Good use for the property. Um. And really, uh, unless Mr. Callum has any comment, uh, I'm ready to.
Well, I, I would add to that. Like I say, I, I took a trip down there and anybody who knows the area, it's not a real high traffic, traffic area anyway. Um, and it looked like what they were doing was pretty consistent and. Like you said, that, I know that club's been there for over a hundred years and I think it's, it's been pretty solid and I've, I've heard anything negative about it, so I'm, I'm on board.
And just one other thing, I'd like to note that the, uh. Building office has approved the, the construction plans.
They have.
Okay, and Ms. Graham, do you have any other, any conditions or anything that you recommend, or is it just?
I do. If it's approved, um, I would recommend. That it meet all state and local, uh, requirements, which they, like I said, they do not have to get JBA approval. Um, and that they complete the work within two years of the approval date.
Is applicant okay with those conditions?
Yeah.
Right? Do I have a motion from the board?
Uh huh.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Have a motion made and properly seconded? There's any more discussion? Seeing none, should we have a vote?
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Soder.
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood.
Hi. Confess, thank you very much. And the next item we have on the agenda, we moved to unfinished business and we have moved the discussion of the last month's CUP applicant, Mr. Baker, which is tabled. Ms. Graham, do you have any more information on that one to give us?
So at our last meeting, uh, Mr. Baker requested that it be tabled to give him time to meet with the fire department, um. And get their recommendation. Um, and Mr. Baker did do that. Uh, we met, um. With Chief Reeves and we met with, uh, Mr. Melton, the building official. And he came up with a revised, um, plan. We'll get up, hold up in just a second. Okay, so this is the, um. Yeah. It's not the right one. Okay. That's it with you. Okay, thank you. Um, so what he has done is provided, um, a twenty-foot fire lane, um, behind each of the buildings. Al- along each side property line. Um, and that was adequate for fire trucks to get back there and to get to fire department connections that are required on each of the buildings. Um, I believe he did move them, some of the buildings and just a little bit as well. Um, he also, um, is providing, um. And if we can pull that up, a, the fence. That's the PVC fences. That's one of the, um, details of the fence that he is looking at. Um, along with, uh, possible, um, landscaping and areas that where it's needed. These are from last month, but those are the, um, floor plans of the apartments that he's proposing. They're three stories, uh, with balcony, um, interior, um, hallways for entertainment. And of course, Mr. Baker is here to, to answer questions and I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Yes, yes.
Um. The. We have a hundred and eighty apartments are proposed and it's on eight point nine eight acres. What is the density? What is the density of the development?
Um, I don't have that in front of me.
Uh, well, I'll ask Mr. Rick when he comes up. The. The density of that development, it seems to me to be. Greater than, uh, what's generally required, uh, unless it's a PUD. A PUD requires, uh, is it twenty-four units per acre, I believe.
There, there is a specification in the, on this meeting.
And this depending on how you measure the density, uh, with parking lots and bumpers and all of that, I'm not sure. But, um, of the. It, it just appears it's, it's a lot denser than what we should be looking at. And I'm just. Thinking of one, one issue might be the height of the buildings. Uh. Again, I, I'm concerned about. Stairs going up to a third floor. stairs going up to a third floor, uh, not having elevators, uh issues that the uh citizens have bought out. Uh uh, I, I would have some concerns about that and wonder if we might consider uh reducing that to two floors rather than three. Uh I think that would resolve a lot of issues and traffic, uh, well the traffic report doesn't increase the uh traffic issues by any reasonable, any uh objectionable amount. It still does add a lot of traffic to three sixty. I am concerned that um I, I, I believe Mr. Baker said last time that he had moved the entrance to the north side of the property so that they could put a turn lane in. I'm concerned with the area, it could be a hundred foot turn lane. That area there is going to re- require uh significant widening of the road in a pretty tight area uh in order to get that turn lane in. Um, so traffic is certainly a problem and even though we're not adding that much to, to cause any problems with a signal at three sixty, it, it does um seem to me to impact uh the general area a lot. Thank you.
And of course, the planning commission can recommend a modification to the request.
I'm at this time, I don't refuse myself. Okay, before we get into a further discussion. Okay.
Ms. Graham, can you, uh, another few of the members um did mention other apartments in the um, in the area that are already being planned or that are already existing? Can you speak to how this would be unique or not unique to the, to the area?
Well, of course, um, the PUD, there, there is one area for proposed apartments, but they also have the option of building um townhouses as well instead of the, the apartments. So at this time, we don't know what they're gonna build there, but they did have an area for apartments. And of course, um, we do have some apartments across, kind of across the street, um, right next to the park. We have two buildings and they are right now. Um, one is not age restricted and the other one is age restricted. Um, and the owner has expressed that he plans to build um some more apartments, which he had already had approval uh several years ago. Um, and he has to have them, I think, built by next summer. So.
Do you know what capacity the apartments are across the street?
What they currently are? I want to say one is sixty-three and I'm not sure how many the other is. Um, I can get the numbers for you.
And these are the ones in this CFP are predominantly single bedroom. Correct.
Single bedroom and studio, I believe.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I, I did some research. Um, I went out and took a drive in Henrico County. I know this has nothing to do um with this um application, but I've got a couple of pictures that I'd just like to pass down through the planning commission for y'all to get a visual um idea of the height of a three-story complex that's being built compared to um existing residences that are both one-story and two-story houses. Um, so if y'all could share those. And in the meantime, I'd like to say a couple of words. Um, I, I think as commissioners, we have a responsibility to our existing um neighboring residents and as well to the plans that we already have approved um and have accepted that we put in or we consider something that's more cohesive than what this proposal is. I think we risk that, you know, people may not be interested in um the two propose, the two, this proposal as well as the um restricted age housing um plans that we've already approved. That we create a potential for problems, both for um our citizens as well as our developers by putting in such high-density housing in this specific area um that we open ourselves up to complaints. Um, I also, there's something that's been bothering me since our last meeting. The package that got distributed to both the planning commission as well as the notifications that went out um to the surrounding um adjacent property owners went out listing Mr. Kellum as the owner of the property. And when we get to the public hearing, we're told that the property has been sold. Um, so I'd like to ask Mrs. Graham, has that property been officially sold, closed and recorded?
It has. Um, actually, when the application was made, Mr. Kellum was the owner. Um, and Mr. Baker was the applicant. And I believe it changed hands the middle of February. Um, Mr. Kellum let me know that he no longer owned the property. Um, and we did check in the clerk's office and the deed had changed over to Irondale, Virginia LLC. Um, I did double check with our um county attorney to make sure that there was no issues with us proceeding ahead uh with the public hearing. And because the applicant is the same and the applicant had approval from Irondale, Virginia to act on their behalf, then we were still good to go with them.
Thank you. I, I do still have a concern related to that because um whereas you have checked with the county attorney and he is okay with it, I really don't think that we normally allow applications to come in and then allow them to proceed forward as originally received once the ownership has changed. And so I do still have a concern related to that. And I and I just think that that should have been something that had come to the planning commission party to us going to public hearing. I think that we've had several um adjoining property owners speak tonight and concern their objections. And I have similar concerns in reference to the application. Um, specifically the height of the complex and the density of the complex.
So all the pictures and like I said, this is Henrico, like I said, um, pertains to us, but it looks like they're putting three stories right next to a residential too, and it doesn't look like they have any kind of buffering. So I didn't know, did you check to see how far it is or do you know?
I, I didn't. I just wanted to give, you know, just a visual reference of if you were on the third story of an apartment complex, how easy it would be to look down on the adjoining neighbors. I do understand that the applicant has, you know, they've made some modifications. They're talking about some of the buffering as well as a fence. Um, but again, if you're on the third floor of an apartment complex, looking down onto your adjoining neighbors, um, that fence isn't really going to ever be tall enough to prevent you to be able to see into their backyards. Um, again, the age-restricted neighborhood um that we, you know, reviewed and accepted plans for or approved um, the, the can, the, the proposal for, um I, I guess I would open it up to commissioners um to question would you or your family want to purchase a property in an age-restricted development knowing that there was going to be a, a high-density um apartment complex um directly next to work? Um, again, I realize from the comp plan and what the areas within our county that we see high-density housing going into, that this is in that area. I just don't know that this specific property is conducive to what's surrounding it.
Ms. Graham, according to what Mr. Wagner says, does this fit within our, he's had questions that it might not fit. It might be too dense just according to your records, do you think that it's too much for what we have in our comp plan?
Well, I mean, he has used every area that he can use on the property.
So it's probably the maximum. I had issues with the three stories too, like Ms. Hyde said, the pictures and they are showing there's coming up in Hanover as well, but uh and we see that it looks like the buffers, they added the things about the fire lanes, but how do they talk more specifically about the buffering? I know there's trees, big trees there. And like I said, it's gonna be, have to be something big like the, what neighbors were saying from the third story. When is we have the fence they showed, that might just cut the first floor, maybe the headlights from the cars that might be parked, but are they proposing anything taller to be mixed in with those trees to somehow eliminate the, maybe the view of the, especially the back backs of these two buildings. It looks like they face directly into the subdivision.
Well, most of the trees in the buffer, I don't believe they're planning to remove them. It's, it's laying along the, the line. Um and I'll let Mr. Baker speak on how much they, they plan to um plant either in front of or behind the fencing there.
That's all I saw. And then uh if he could maybe have him come up with.
Okay.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Question on Mark Baker, Baker Development Resources and uh getting here on Path of the Younger. Um I think you got a little bit of an update about the fire and emergency services concern. We did put in some uh uh some fire lanes, which would be uh passable, able to carry the load of a, of a truck. They wouldn't be paved. So it'd be a a substrate that could handle that load. It would be grass over top of us. Uh, we also tweaked some islands within the parking area to accommodate the county's larger ladder truck. And so that seemed to satisfy uh Chief Reeves. Um, with regards to the buffering, you actually have some standards within your code, which would be applicable. And there's a couple of different options. There's uh the minimum six-foot fence. That's where we showed a vinyl fence uh which was, I think, preferable to staff, like white vinyl fence of that design. Um and then along with that, some deciduous trees that are included. And that would be in addition to uh vegetation that would be retained. The other option is that you can do a double staggered row of uh like a pinniferous or deciduous, a rather of evergreen tree. More than likely, that would be uh Leyland cypress or uh green jar giant arborid. And what we had suggested is that the code required, and there's some deciduous uh elements that go along with that, that buffer option as well. And what we had suggested is that um, that site plan review wants all the details in terms of the ultimate grading and the quality of the, of the vegetation to be retained. Once that's very clear, uh, we would want to go in on a case-by-case basis. Um, you know, utilize either the fence or, or that double staggered row of the evergreens to its greatest effect to give the, the best uh screening uh that could potentially be, be given in addition to the existing trees. And we had also suggested that, you know, we'd certainly be willing to meet with neighbors to talk about how to strategically place those and which of those options they would prefer as well. So that was the goal with regards to, you know, where we had left from the last meeting and coming into this meeting. There's some other things that have been, I'm certainly going to ask questions about um that have come up since that. And, you know, perhaps we can have a discussion of those as we're going. Um, this is intended to be a, a, you know, high-quality development. It is called for in the comp plan in terms of being a growth area. I think it's a need that, that, that is indicated is, is needing to be addressed. Uh, to the extent that there are other approvals, I mean, it's entirely possible. We're not, we're on track where uh according to HRC, we're, we're not gonna have the infrastructure in place to support the utilities on this project for a couple of years. So it's difficult to see exactly where we are at that point. And clearly, we're pursuing approvals at this point and there'll be uh, you know, some analysis, I'm sure, of the number of units on the market in terms of pulling the trigger and ultimately moving forward with the project. But uh but the need seems to be there now in terms of what the master plan is calling for, comp plan rather. Uh, in terms of height, um, you know, certainly be willing to, uh, one of the things mentioned by a couple of people is the concern over balcony. I mean, that's certainly something that we could, we could address uh if, if, if height, if I could remain at, at three, I think we're gonna talk about two stories. We'd probably want to go back and, and if that's really a, a concern that we're gonna push, uh, that's probably something we'd want to go back and analyze a little bit further in terms of that density that you had asked about. So I'm just trying to remember everything that was discussed, but in terms of that density, I think you had mentioned that twenty-fourth threshold, but this is the twenty is what the number of units would be. So uh twenty acre. Again, in terms of the traffic, uh, there seems to be room to accommodate the, the improvements that BDOTs ask for. In fact, they've signed off on, on our response to, to their latest uh round of comments. So I think, I think that was addressed. I would say that, you know, with regards to children and, and public streets, and there's not really an opportunity for the, the folks who are gonna live in this complex, they're gonna go directly to King, King William. They're, they're not going to be driving through or have an opportunity to drive through uh adjacent neighborhoods. Perhaps you have some additional questions?
Ever considered townhomes?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever considered townhomes?
Uh, my client did not consider townhomes. Um, you know, this discussion started a number of months ago, but we've been talking about apartments since the beginning and we perceived that, that there was a, uh, you know, a need for the, a need for that.
One other question, Chairman, if I may.
I'm just gonna push out here. If uh some of the board maybe wants to shrink it down to two stories, then it might be a little less dense. You wouldn't need as much parking, but maybe you could make some of the buildings wider, so you wouldn't need that much parking, but maybe you could get almost as many on two floors. If that seems to be the major problem is looking down and seeing, because like you said, there isn't gonna be, nobody's gonna run through this neighborhood to go, because it's just, unless you live there. And if you're at rest with the neighbors, and like I said, I just don't worry about specifically putting something where the views from those back houses are, put some extra. I know there's trees there. But they, the leaves fall off trees during the winter. So something like you said, evergreen specifically placed to keep those up. The first level defense will do for the lights and for people on the first level. They can't see anything at all, but, but the ones um, I'm not knowing if I want to suggest drop to a two-story, but if the majority of the planning commission wants to do that, I was thinking you would have to maybe go back and restructure it. But like I said, we need less parking. You can maybe make them a little wider and just have two stories. I like the idea of, like I said, we need the single story and it's not gonna be like families of childrens with the one-bedroom apartment. So that, like I said, is kind of a need and it is gonna be a build out of at least start five years, about the ten years.
I mean, it's, we were told twenty twenty-five till the facilities are in place and that was the most recent. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna be held back on them reviewing our site plan review, I believe, until after that time. And then we have an instruction after that. So there's a little bit of time there.
Hey, that's all I saw. Some if you could work this out in my place, it depends on what the rest of the planning commission wants to do. And I, I do see, like I said, maybe we don't want Henrico's view of such a big thing next to this, maybe like, and some of the neighbors were saying, and it's not that this particular property and other properties are so different, it's a different owner. So they may have different ideas for them. And this is your property. So this is your idea. So if they're saying, well, they moved somewhere else, you can't move your property somewhere else. And this is your property and this is what you want to do. But um I'm willing to come up with any options people want to say, or maybe change a condition or, or do we want to?
If, what I, what I would suggest, if you have more feedback, we, we just talked about it. This is not, we're not gonna have utilities here until twenty twenty-five. And I said it at the last meeting too. I mean, what, we're, we're, and we're not, not for the neighbors, we were clear with that as well, that this, you know, this can certainly be a discussion. Um you know, I, I'm willing to take the feedback and if we need to, again, you know, table and come back with, with other idea, I'd rather do that than come out with a with, if, 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 for instance, something like the three stories, particularly adjacent to the, the most established. With if, 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 for instance, something like the three stories, particularly adjacent to the the most established neighbors. But that's, if that's, uh, uh, you know, if that's a deal color from your perspective, I'd certainly rather. Have an opportunity to work through it, you, you mentioned we are a little bit over, over, over parked, really, in terms of number of parking space that. Um, you know, could there be some efficiencies, reducing height here, you know, expanding there to try to, try to.
That's true, just those two buildings might be two story.
Well, I mean, I, I guess, is there could be something that we could come back, if we, if just as long as I can make sure I understand your concerns fully. We have, we do have time to, to, you know, I think, work through some, some, uh. Some concepts, but it, but I can't do it at the podium, we have a hard back, then there's, you know, uh, uh, an engineer that's, that's involved with the site plan, but. You know, what could be reasonable understanding your concerns?
And Ms. Graham, if we table it again, they have up to a year, I mean, we can, I remember there was a certain rule. If we don't vote on it.
If you deny it, they have to wait a year.
Oh, that's to do it again.
Go back.
But if we just table it, don't they have a certain period of time to bring it back, or do we set the time period to come back?
Normally can set the time, but.
So.
I think it has, well, we, we've heard it, I know it has to be heard within seventy days.
Right. I mean, if the applicants want to do that, working some more of the new conditions, would everybody be able, am amiable to do that, rather than taking a vote on it and?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just my thoughts on this, uh, because these are never easy, uh, easy hearings at all, because. Uh, if we approve it as is, we're gonna have some upset people, if we recommend denial, then we're gonna have some upset people as well. Um, I will kind of backdoor this a little bit, um, to Orlando and exactly how I feel, but, um. We have, um, goals of expanding our, our business sector of the county so that we can offset. And, um, offset the tax base a little bit off the, um, the residential side, which is needed, um. When companies look to relocate, they, especially larger companies. They do look to see a mix of. Different types of residential so that they can ensure that they get the, uh, sufficient labor force available. So they, they look for things like, um. Single family houses, apartments, uh, townhouses, so forth, so forth, and we are, uh, certainly. Gearing towards that with some of the recent developments, um, I haven't seen single bedroom. Units in the county, and there, there might be some that exist, but I do know that when I see on. Various social media, somebody is, uh, trying to rent out a house, uh, at a two or three bedroom house, rents for sixteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month. Which is extremely expensive, and that somebody is just freshly out of college, trying to get their, uh, foot in the door at a company. They're, they're not able to afford a two bedroom house at fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars a month, um, perhaps. A single family apartment would be of benefit to them. So I do feel there's a need for this, um. However, I, I don't know, it's certainly the, the concerns shared tonight, um, are absolutely noted. Um, so as I look at this, I, I kind of maybe. Feeling more along the lines of Mr. Greenwood said, as far as maybe, you know, going to two floors, or. Maybe a mixture of townhouses and and apartments to offset that a little bit, um, maybe townhouses on the. On the, um, perimeter and and a couple of apartment, apartments in the middle could work possibly, um. I, I'm open to to other suggestions in order to 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 not necessarily deny this, recommend denial to the, to, you know, at this point, but. Um, but to see if there's some way that we can figure out a, a way forward that works. For everybody, and I'm sure that nobody's gonna get everything they absolutely want out of this, but certainly, um, the recurring theme was. Um, the, the lack of, of privacy. Um, and I, as I see the buffer on this, I, I, I definitely think the, the buffer as presented on, on this site plan. Is insufficient for, for, for what the, um, for what the neighbors are, are, are asking for, so. Um, I'd like to see maybe if some, some additional thought plan going into it and seeing there's something that we can. That we can make work, um.
Mr. Chair, if I could, um, Mrs. Graham, could you, um. I guess try to, um. Terrain of thought, here's. If we were to take this to a vote tonight. We discussed some conditions in the past, um, not just for this application, but others that we would want to see. That, um, building permits be issued within a certain timeframe. From the time that the conditional use permit is approved, and I do understand from what's been presented. That H R S D is not prepared at this time to support this density for this complex. And so I understand that it sounds like there's going to be a delay before anything gets started on this complex. Um, if it were to get approved, um, and so. I do have some concerns about that, because again, if that was one of the conditions that we would place. Um, we would prob, there's a potential that you could come up against that timeframe that they would have to reapply and apply. Um, and so could, could you go back and recap some of the conditions that we spoke to? Um, in our last meeting related to this application. Sorry to put you on the spot, Sherry, but I don't remember all the things that we, um, potentially discussed at the last meeting. Um, that if we were to go to an approval, um, that we would want to make sure, uh, we're included. While Sherry's, I'm trying to gather some of that, Mr. Baker, I really do appreciate you coming and speaking to us and being very willing to be flexible. Related to, you know, what we as a commission would like to see, um. Done in order to not, um, have to go to a denial, um, and that, you know. That you're willing to make some of those adjustments as well as, um, to try to meet, you know, the citizens' concerns, I do appreciate.
The chair is looking that up. I would note that the terrain on this property is. Viable out front, I think it's a little higher than it is back in the interior of the property. So it appears to me that the property is gonna require a lot of regrading, we don't have a. A grading plan on it yet, so it's kind of hard to, to see exactly how that's going, but. It would be my estimation that the most of the existing trees will probably go, once that's regraded. Um, what I had suggested last time was these landscaping, which consist of both a solid. Fence or vinyl fences, he suggested, plus a double row of, uh. Evergreens at a height of eight feet at planted. Uh, to give as much cover as we could possibly could, um. Like eight feet's probably about generally a maximum that we want to go to.
Okay, so with, um, the conditions we discussed at the last. The buffering, fencing on both sides of the property, no shining lights on the adjacent properties. And of course, uh, he addressed the needs, um, for fire protection.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, while Mrs. Graham is still at the podium, is there any other, um, things that you think the planning commission should consider? Um, after all that's been discussed tonight?
Well, that is of course up to the planning commission, but if they did wanna do a, um, height restriction. Um, to, to two stories.
I, I would not be opposed to the, the height restriction on the, on the outer, um, apartments, the, the middle building, I, I think. I don't see any reason why that couldn't be three stories, um.
And we haven't really talked about, and excuse me for interrupting, but the other side is still the property that. The age restricted housing.
The, the age restricted carriage homes and then the library site on the corner there.
I feel like we've got some, some concerns, um, from the community. Uh, but we also have an applicant that is extremely willing to try to work with. Um, whatever challenges that have been brought forth, um, at this point, I, I would recommend them table this.
Uh, you could table it and ask the applicant to come back with a more detailed landscape buffer. Um, and any modifications that you would like to see, um, for the apartment buildings.
We, we, um, make that requirement that, uh, we look at other options. Uh, either two stories or a combination of two three stories to lessen the. Uh, impact on the surrounding properties, we've got age restricted on one side and six homes on the other side. Um, maybe some, uh, combination or, or consideration of that.
I don't know that a table requires a second. So I think that's already been put on the table, but what I would want to see from the commission. Um, myself is that we give some specific direction, um, to the applicant to make sure that. You know, for whatever length of time we table this until we bring it back, that they have clear direction from us as to what. We are looking for them to come back with, um, because we could table this forever, you know, but I don't know that that's. I don't know that that's the right thing to do, if we have specific things that are concerns that we think that they can address. I think we need to give them the specifics now in order for them to be able to come back, um, next time with that information. Um, again, I don't wanna see this continue to be tabled, um, for us to continue just to try to manipulate it until we can get something that can get approval. Um, I think we need to give them some clear direction and then go with that.
And I guess, Mr. Baker, do you think, I mean, with what we've told you tonight, maybe would. Six months be too much time, or? Like you said, cause it's probably not, I mean, I didn't know if you had any milestones, since like I said, don't have any H R S D yet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that would be, I, I would probably say more than, not, no more than ninety days.
Oh, okay, you can get a change on it, I think.
Yeah, the, 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 uh, engineer is pretty responsive, architect's pretty responsive on this one, so it's just a matter of. Hashing it out, we'd have to get together, we have certainly hurt a number of things, uh, the more detailed guidance, the better, obviously. Um, but we can go back and, and, uh, and do some more work and look at it.
I know I would specifically like to see a little bit more robust, um, buffering and to maybe look at. The, um, the type or height of the, uh, of the units that are. On the, um, that are bordering the, the adjacent parcels.
Have those same issues, and that was because you've already met the fire standards, and like, Mr. Wagner's saying, it's only twenty, not twenty, it's twenty four.
Well, he said.
Twenty four.
I said twenty four, he said it's twenty, it's twenty if you divide nine acres into. Sure, do you, do you know how that's considered, what is considered, uh, of acreage? In determining the, um. The density.
I know we have the density worded into the P U D, but we don't have the density worded in the other part of the ordinance. Um, I did look for it, I did not see that anywhere in the ordinance.
But that would be, that would be the one thing I would like to see considered is, is, uh, what the actual density would be, uh, based on. Guidelines and, uh. If we can reduce that density as well as come up with something that, um, marketable as well as, uh. Acceptable to the neighbors. Was said, uh. The, the buffering is gonna be important on both sides of the property.
If there is significant, um. Significant work that needs to be done for grading purposes, maybe, uh, the, the, a certain height berm. In combination with other, could be other buffering.
Could burn on those sides. From what I saw, it appears to me that. These land lies a little lower on the side next to the central crossing. It's high up front along Route thirty, and then it's up and down in the interior.
The berms can be a, a blessing and a problem, right, cause they, they can require more grading themselves. And then in order to get the right slope, and based on the height, I mean, they can actually deflect water off the property, whereas, you know, the, the goal is to retain it on site. And place it at a rate that is consistent with what the current rate is, so, but that can be a challenge, that can be problematic for neighbors too, but we'll certainly look at, you know, options.
And this, I give more conditions besides what we still got.
Now, I think we've expressed all the concerns and, and you've heard what the citizens' concerns are as well, so just, you know, keep all those things in mind.
Chairman Greenwood?
Yes.
It does require a first and a second, it doesn't require a roll call.
Yeah, I recommend.
Yeah, don't take a vote. I'm agreeing anyways, not a vote, this.
We gotta put it at our July meeting.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Next item we have is, is there any other unfinished business? I didn't see anything else of the category, but. Move on to new businesses, is there any new business? I don't see anything stated there, do I? Is there any new business?
There's no new business.
Okay. Moving on, step into our special committee's reports, we have the Edmond's reports provided by Ms. Grover, I guess that's at our table today. Ms. Grover, would you like to go over?
So we did close out the month on Friday, and then we were able to get all the reports together in front of you, uh, this evening. So we closed out the month with thirty nine zoning and land disturbance permits and seven, um. Planning items that we reviewed for the month of March, you do have your zoning log that details the permits that we reviewed. And along with the custom report that provides the types of permits that we actually reviewed. The E N S and zoning inspections, the property maintenance report for the month of March, um, so. If you run into any questions that you have after you have time to review it, feel free to contact us, and we'll be happy to respond to those questions.
What I see here, they do look very detailed, which is what you said you were gonna come up with, and I think the board had asked her to be more this, like, very specific, I like. All the information, so thank you very much. Does anybody else have any comments beforehand, like we haven't had time to see it, it was just here tonight, so.
Yes, thank you. For providing all of that and working to make sure that we have, um, some detailed information reviewed.
All right, so now we'll move on, do you have anything with, you said all three of them, so that's, that was the, all the reports. And I'll move on to commissioner's comments, uh, just like down where I started last time. Work session. Oh, well, we have to finish the comments first, okay.
I'm so lucky that I get to be on one end and we get to go first. As usual, thank you to Mrs. Graham and staff for all the good work that you do. Um and I really want to take the opportunity yet again tonight to thank all of those citizens who are in attendance tonight and for those who came up and spoke. It's really important um being a commissioner to get input from the um citizens as far as how you feel. You know, in response to um the work that we're doing and for any conditional use permits, et cetera, that come before us. And so I thank you for coming and thank you for sharing your feelings with us, um we do take those into consideration when we're trying to. Make decisions for the county and what's in the best interest of the county, so I thank you for coming out tonight and sharing with us.
Uh I echo um Ms. Heights' comments for sure, uh the staff is, this this report is is very detailed and. And um and I like the, you know, the ability to to see how things, how different issues have progressed um. As well and, you know, go back and see some of those, some of those items um and and thank you for everybody turning out tonight, uh you you don't realize. That when we come into a public hearing. A lot of times the concerns um are presented at at that public comment. Uh for the hearing, not not presented to us beforehand, and so we may have preconceived notions on how we might. See the hearing play out, uh how we might even vote. Um and there's been many times that I have come in thinking that I'm going to vote a certain way on on a hearing and after hearing. The comments from the citizens, it definitely makes me um personally, and I'm sure. Not speak for anybody else, but I'm sure it goes, it's said for others as well, that it does, um it is meaningful um for sure. And it does have an impact. We we have a lot of of uh things in the pipeline in this county. Um we're going to have a very busy planning commission schedule over the next several years and. Having plenty of of citizen input on the different matters that come before us. Is what we need as a commission, uh we need to hear from the public to see what they want. Um and then, yeah, obviously, yeah, like in the case of tonight. Uh we have a, you know, an owner of a parcel of property that wants to do one thing with it and it's at odds with. Adjacent property owners, uh there's not going to be a clear winner loser there, um and. It's it's not an easy decision to 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 come to, and I hope that by tabling this. It gives an opportunity for both sides to have some dialogue and uh the additional planning that. Goes into it will reflect positively on the relationship between um this if it eventually gets approved or um. Or not, so um but the uh the county involvement is um traditionally very weak. Um there's been many meetings that we've had where there's been two people in the audience, and it's usually the same two people every single month. And so when we have things like the Simon's Track uh pub. Um those, that had been, we've been working on that for months and maybe that's something that. Maybe maybe as a county, we can do better on getting getting word out on certain things, whether it's a big billboard. Instead of a small zoning change, so I don't know, uh but it's something that I think that we can try to. Be more transparent in what in what is going on, so it doesn't catch people off guard. I know that uh there, we do, every every one of our meetings, every one of our public hearings is 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 put out there for the public to see. But if the public's not seeing it, I think we need to find ways to uh to tap into that.
I do appreciate people from Central Crossing coming out and expressing their concerns, I think that has helped us to. Work toward a solution to this problem um that will be satisfactory to all concerned. Uh the other thing, an article came out in the Country Courier, I believe, this week on the Sebelon Tagratos. And I just want to express that I appreciate staff's work on that, I think uh it certainly, in my opinion, it was a. Good outcome from the court. That puts that back more or less to. Uh plan one, uh start all over again and once it's cleaned up. So I I think that was the outcome and I really appreciate staff's work on that.
Um I think I'd like to to echo, obviously, what was said about staff and and people coming out tonight. Uh Mr. Sluter made several good points that I feel, uh given the the recent recent climate here in the county. That we as a commission really need to strive to to have as much transparency as possible. Um I know a lot of you keep up with social media. Things like the Simon's property, a- again, one person got up and spoke about that project and their only concern was the dog. And the trash, it was no for or opposed opposition um until. After the meeting, then social media was lit up with, I didn't know this was going there, I didn't know that was going there. I was concerned and and I voiced some of my concerns, the two by two rezoning signs, I I just do not think cut it anymore. Something of that magnitude, um as Mr. Slutter alluded to, something something just short of a neon sign. Needs to go out there and and a little more information, it it should have said on a billboard. Six hundred and fifteen proposed houses here, two hundred which are apartment builds, please come and voice your opinion. Because, again, playing off what Mr. Slutter said, a lot of times we come in here. Thinking that that the public is thinking one way and and I make no bones about it, I I work for the people of the third district, I'm gonna vote however the people in. Third district voice their opinions to me, that's my job, that's who I work for. And I think we need to get it out there, cause because there's so many misconceptions. Between a Sheetz, a Wawa, a Walmart, a Starbucks, where they're going. Every time a piece of land is cleared, it's it's something going here, something going there, I think it's part of their job. To get good information out to the community in a timely fashion so they can plan for it. They can come here and and have an opportunity to make us as commissioners know how they feel. So that we can vote accordingly. And as far as the the transparency goes, for for everyone in the third district or any district for that matter. Um I again, the people here tonight, I just, the the comments were wonderful, I thought they all made sense. And I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't weigh in on it a little bit, but just for the public, I did have to recuse myself because. I did own that property at one time, uh the property was closed, as Ms. Graham said. Before the applicant came in for the hearing and then I recused myself, but. E- even that project, I don't think was was really advertised and got out to the masses to where the people could really come in. Obviously, the people in Central Crossing that that back up to the project. Uh it it was really, really a big project for them and I understand it, but I think it's really a big project for the whole county. And we just really need to be better about getting the people in here. And and voicing their opinions, because it does mean a lot, what I heard here tonight meant a lot, and I I see things through a totally different perspective. But that's it.
I echo what all my fellow commissioners have said, I said, thank you for the citizens, for Miss Taylor and all of the other citizens, neighbors on Central Crossing. And as Miss, Mr. Height. Mr. Sluter said, we come in with one conception, what we might do. But we even had issues at the last meeting, but like I said, we didn't, I think we even mentioned some of these as well, because as Miss Taylor said. The three stories in that section seems a little much, and as Mr. Wagner says, it's maybe too much for that area, but anyway. And I'm glad that the applicant is willing to work with us, and that's nice when they do that, and we don't have to. Throw everything out and come back and start over, but it's real nice, and as always, I thank staff, like I said, it's just like board supervisors. Staff is. The best for us, it's like, they all have so much to do now, it's like, it's no longer, as some of my other board members are saying. We don't have one meeting a month anymore, we have one meeting a week, or two meetings a week, sometimes five meetings a week, so. Even the planning commission, as you all know, and going out to look and stuff, it's, it's a lot of work for staff and. The boards and commissions, so thanks, everybody, so.
Mr. Trump, can I have one more? Sure, I I I would just like that, I think that you and I discussed this a little bit, um I was very glad to see that the. Foles with their V R V O finally got past the board.
Um and that was for us, because Lord, I I was shocked myself, because I, as I told y'all, I did not think that was gonna happen, but as we said here. We took it amongst ourselves, because that's what we do, we should have done it first, and we said, bring it back to them, even though. We didn't ask to bring it back to us, and I'm very proud of y'all for doing that, and we got it changed unanimously, I was like, I I was at a heart attack, but.
I was very, I was very proud of the work this commission put in, and we kind of all gelled together on. Those folks went and and met every condition, jumped through every possible hoop we can ask them to jump through. And and ultimately, they they got what they want, and the adjacent landowners got as much as they could possibly get as well. And and I think it was just a a good, reasonable outcome for everybody, and and hopefully, the project discussed here tonight can can follow them that same path.
Working, working with the Foles and the neighbors, really helping.
Exactly, agreed.
Had several comment comments about uh applicants thanking the staff for their help, and I think that is just awesome to hear.
I think that's a prime example of um. A a good outcome overall, trying to meet, you know, what the neighbors um. Wanted to see if if an approval was done, as well as the applicant being flexible enough. Um to work to make sure that, you know, it would get to an approval, so I I think there's a lot of work that got put into that, both from staff. As well as the applicant themselves and the neighbors, as well as the planning commission and the board, so that was a great outcome. What I really wanted to um also mention, um it was something that one of our speakers said tonight. Um in reference to the information, when this comes back in July. Um I would encourage Mrs. Graham and staff to make sure that whatever, um for example, the handout that got brought to us. Um from the applicant for the revised, it's included in the package that comes to the planning commission. And I'd also like to say to the citizens, our um agenda packages are on the county website. And they're out there prior to our meeting, and the information that we review should be included in that packet. So I encourage you, whether it's this particular conditional use permit. Or any future planning commission meetings, those agenda packages are out there. You can know what's going on and what we're reviewing by going out onto the county website and pulling that each month. Um I even do it for the board supervisors' meetings, whether I can or cannot attend, um so I stay in the net, so I would encourage you to do this.
Everyone, now we'll move on to work session matters, since we are not having a separate work session meeting, we're going to include it in our meeting. First discussion of entrances and driveways, Ms. Graham.
We had some changes to this, but they were the changes that y'all had agreed upon.
This item was in yellow and the red strikeouts.
So under eighty six dash four fifty four. For a under generally, oh, we're scratching out, there shall be. Only one access to an adjacent primary or secondary highway by a new street. And no lot shall have direct access to an existing primary or secondary highway. And we're changing the wording to be, there shall be only one access to an adjacent primary highway. There shall be only one access to a secondary highway or a shared driveway for every two lots that front a secondary highway. So that is still only permitting one entrance on thirty or three sixty. But on the secondary roads, they can do either one sh- one lane for the four lots or two lots. Or they can have one driveway per two shared lot, or one shared driveway for two lots. So if this wording works for you, um if not, we can revisit it a little bit.
All of you know I'm opposed. But one thing, um where we got the shared driveway, if this goes through and goes to the board. Where we have the shared driveway, that's unrequiring any easement. And I would recommend that it be a bit easier, and that there be an agreement. Required in the ordinance or in, or in the ordinance or on the plans. An agreement between the property owners for the things that's a driveway. But that, that is highly controversial in some of the stuff, so so in areas we have now. Not in non subdivision, so we have not, except for that, but in other locations, it's highly controversial. And I could think of a lot of things.
Um I I do not disagree with Mr. Wagner on that, that the um maybe the first fifty feet in. And fifty foot wide. I I think that leaves it kind of open ended, because you never know whether it's gonna be, I would assume someone with a shared driveway as soon as they come in. Go their separate ways, but again, I'm I'm open to. I I agree with you, some sort of road maintenance agreement between the two homeowners to maintain the entrance. I think twenty five feet on each side of the property line. Um and then fifty, at least fifty feet in, but again, you. The only reason I say that, the the houses only have to be seventy five feet off the road. So we don't want the easement to go in too far, because then we get an issue where the house has to be so far off of the easement as well.
Um I don't think going into the fifty foot walks, like you said, there's gonna be twenty five on each side. Uh that's more than adequate for people to to get in and then.
Go their separate ways.
Yeah. Uh you know, you never know how somebody wants to do their driveway.
Think I can see where Mr. Sluter's going and I'll respond.
I was trying to say, I mean, is it simple enough to say? The cost of maintain maintaining the shared driveway, it's it's eight nine. Yeah, yeah, I don't exactly know what word it, but just simply put, it's a shared burden for for each property owner to maintain the.
I mean, it just needs to be an agreement.
Right.
That requires.
Maybe, or we even require a written agreement or.
Like, that's a written agreement. In real life, it doesn't work, because.
Most.
Yeah, Sherry knows, I've got one too.
It would be a written agreement that is recorded with the.
My neighbors don't even know we have one, when they bought the house, they were like, what, we have a road maintenance agreement? They didn't reveal it or didn't tell me, and so they don't pay anything to tell, but.
Yeah, I hear that from a lot of people where the road maintenance agreement requires that they pay, I'll just use as an example, a hundred dollars a year. And half will pay and half will not pay, and it's impossible um for them to, you know, get the money.
But that that was, that was part of my argument with the with the four houses on road, then you take it from two people trying to get along to four people trying to get along. With the shared entrance, most lenders now. With the shared entrance, most lenders now, if they see that it's a shared entrance on a site plan that is required by the county. Are going to require a road maintenance agreement to be recorded in the deed anyway. But again, as far as the county to require it, I don't think that's a bad idea either, so.
I think we have the wording in here for the the lane um that it's required. So we can just kind of use some of that same language and add it to that if that works for everybody. And we'll put the fifty foot in there as well.
Is that the only thing in that one? Let's see, I was yellow, so. It's like the next item we have, discussion of the short-term rental warrants.
So I did a little research on this, and I did um include some. Adjacent localities of what they do, as well as a survey that I found online. Um, and just about everybody requires a conditional use permit, and then they require an annual renewal. Um, I did bring that up at the board meeting, but they did not require that there be an annual renewal for the the last. Short-term rental that they just did. Uh, another thing to consider is it's permitted by right in the AC. Y'all may want to leave it like that, y'all may want to to change it, whereas CUP is required, no matter where it's located.
I I would say one, I think we we had discussed, and I I feel like it was a pretty. Uh, evenly agreed that the the term. I think having a a one-year renewal. Um, basically puts the the applicant or the owner on notice that they need to follow the guidelines, and it also gives. The adjacent landowner some some light at the end of the tunnel, if they are having problems. They may have to put up with it for up to twelve months, but at least they'll have an opportunity to come in here. Blame, bring any police records, any incident reports, any pictures of damage. Dogs in the yard, whatever they can gather up and come in here and say, this is why I did not want this, and this should not be renewed. So. I I don't know, you know, the board didn't didn't put that in there, but I I see that as something that's. Good for the county, good for the applicant, good for the adjacent landowners to have some sort of recourse if things do go wrong.
Well, some localities, uh, when it comes up for renewal, if they have a valid complaint, and it's been, it's been validated. They do not renew it for a year.
And and I think you're probably gonna get to it, so I hate to jump the gun on you, but the uh, you did some research on the transient tax as well, which we currently. Do not collect, but I think the Foley's had indicated they had been collecting the tax, they just didn't know where to send it. So a a missed opportunity for the county.
So what would happen is we would have to recommend to the board supervisor. Um, that they do the transient tax. Uh, the town of West Point just did um adopt an ordinance uh with a ten percent transient tax. And that is something else that we could also do. I know there's not a whole lot in the county at this time. But I I think this is growing to be more and more, um. You know, it's gonna be used more and more with the Airbnbs and the Bebows and the RBS and. Um, same thing with the bed breakfast, you're gonna see that grow more, I believe.
And and I did a little research on it, I've seen it anywhere from eight percent to eighteen percent, so. I I think at West Point, not that, not that we need to follow West Point, but if West Point's at ten percent, I think even a kind of on the same keel for now, it looks to be a. A good thing to do.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking with the town at ten, I think if we were going to do something like that, we really do need to kind of. Stay in line with what the town is doing.
So. So the annual renewal, if there's, are we, are we saying that if there's any complaints?
Valid.
Any valid complaints, they would, would, they would end up losing their.
A one year.
One year, or should we put May? I mean, we might want to see like what's the seriousness of the, I mean, it might be a valid, but it might be like. Somebody was loud at.
It's up to, you know, you have three anyway. So we are taking the three out, making it one? Oh, I don't know about that, you know, that's kind of strict.
We can do the May, not shall, and.
I would rather be able to to see the nature of the.
The claim.
The complaints and and go from there. I mean, maybe that allows maybe too much subjectiveness into it, but. I just, I feel like one, one complaint, one valid complaint, it it could be something pretty minor, and if we have just a hard line on that, that's. I don't think it's fair to the business owner operating that. You know, that short-term rental.
And I did check with the commissioner's office um about the business license. Um, and they said that would not be a problem, not issuing the business license that they did not renew.
Now, M- Mr. Green was just uh uh alluded to something you weren't aware that had been changed from three to one. The complaints, when, how did that happen?
Oh, no, that's just being proposed. It's three right now.
If it says that's the first sentence, the license may be revoked at more than three substantiated complaints are received within the one-year period, and that's why we didn't add the additional. For the board, because if they get three, they're out of there anyway, but I told them that we may be re-. Updating the ordinances and may put the year, but like I said, we couldn't hold. That particular applicant to the new, because we had come up with the new ordinance yet, so they were under the old one, but if we wanted to change it, but I didn't know, like I said. Because it's kind of a double, and still have the line of three, but then underneath it, it's one, so that's kind of a.
Well, I I got, I've got a solution to that, because I I do foresee that if there is a that, if there is a truly a valid complaint. Then whoever the offended party is would have to wait that year until the renewal came up before. There would, there would be a cease to operations. So maybe what we do is say, or if there's three. Yeah, an annual re- renewal fee, and then if there's three. Um. Valid complaints within a, within a year, the business license would be immediately revoked.
Well, I looked it in there, the license may be revoked, be revoked if more than three substantiated complaints are received within a one-year period. But.
Fascinating.
We also say it will not be renewed if we receive, and we did that as May, so. We go on down, the annual new renewal application and fee of seventy-five dollars is required. The planning department has received any valid complaints within the year, this short-term rental permit net output may. Um, not be renewed if the applicant must re-apply for a conditional use permit. Then the commissioner of revenue will not renew the business license until they receive their annual renewal permit.
Can I ask the question, are we also gonna need to um put something? In definitions related to what's a valid complaint, because I'm sure there's gonna be some question about how do you. And and I'm just gonna give a reference to one of the complaints that's been coming to the board and to the planning commission about. Noise as far as dogs and kennels are concerned, so I I'm just trying to put that out there for us to consider. Um. What substantiates a valid um complaint and how you would substantiate. For somebody that has a complaint like that, not that that would apply to this, how how do they, how do we determine what's valid?
So I will come up with something, uh, loud noise, excessive traffic.
Um, how do you, how do you, so let me just keep asking, how do you define loud noise? So. Is that, how do they, how does a complaint it? Come to you that they have a certain decibel of noise that's been recorded. Um. By the sheriff's office, I I mean, I.
And we don't have anything that's gonna measure that, okay, from the sheriff's office, but.
Could, could it be three complaints where some action is taken? If some sort of action is actually taken, if there's a police report filed, something we could somehow track. Uh, as as Miss I was saying, I mean, anybody could get on the phone three times and say the dog's out, the dog's out, the dog's out.
I would want it to be enforceable, you know, we keep, we talk about that a lot with the decisions that we make. That you want to make sure that it's something that staff can enforce. I don't want to put language out there that we don't give y'all also the opportunity. To have an avenue to enforce.
Mr. Chairman, generally, uh, what we have said in other situations is. After, in any loud noise after nine P M. On weekdays and after uh ten P M, I think on Friday and Saturday. So that. That's probably the best we can do on noise, because nobody's gonna be going out there with a.
We don't have one.
I I get what Miss Hyde's saying, she's saying, how how do we, how do we make sure that it's a valid complaint? Because it's like, like Mr. Callum said. My dog, your dog's barking too loud, next week, parked into a, there's no way to validate that.
So I think what is Graham was saying, she's gonna have to come up with some type of definition for um. Valid complaint, and they'll have to put some parameters around that, so it'll probably take over a while to be able to come up with exactly.
I know we have a uh a maximum number of people, uh, we don't want excessive traffic going in and out of there. Certainly don't want loud music, loud noise, uh, but it is something that we're gonna have to be able to visually. Um, see, or if they call the sheriff's office.
Pictures, they, you know, uh, we had, uh, one of the complaints, we're gonna be for interrupting, but we have one of the complaints about subdivisions. Having um four-wheelers or ADBs traveling, they would have to, they would have to provide proof. Um, you know, the complaint board, um, that might necess- not necessarily be something that the. Staff would be able to, you know, would have to visually see themselves.
I'd like to suggest taking out the Hanny in there, just if the planning department has received valid complaints within the year, the short-term rental permit may. Not be, no, will, yeah, may not be renewed. That way it gives us, kind of keeps with the first line. If it's more than three, they're gonna lose it anyway, but if you can substantiate valid complaints, then it's maybe. That were taken, yes.
So do you, we can do that. Do you want to keep it as permitted by right in the AC?
This is just my feeling, I I must feel like until we have um some more of these applications coming in and knowing that we don't have. Any issues, I would suggest that we change that um to where it would need to come to conditional use permit. If in the future we see that we do not have any issues, that we could certainly. Easily enough to go back and readdress that and make it less stringent, um, but I wouldn't want to continue before trying to address. Um, some updates now, leave it, um. This is just my feeling, leave it the way it is, and then want to go back and try to enforce stricter later, but that's just my thoughts.
Bottom line, it's, he paid attention to that type of market in the news, localities tend to be. Really tightening down on the short-term rentals. Um, and in some cases, it's because hotel lobbyists, but in other cases, it's because there's, there's. Reasonable amount of issues that sometimes come with them. I think the Foley's was, you know, the 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 amount that they were charging. Uh, the the nature of of what, of what theirs was, I don't think they're gonna have an issue with that. Um, but, yeah, I think getting ahead of the game as much as we can, uh, with it now would be. With that, that's what's about.
Now, ask Mrs. Graham what other question, is there any opportunity if we. For instance, start seeing a lot of these come in as conditional use permits to. Readdress a fee schedule for these type of applications, or would that still, I mean, do we, does it? Do we see that that's gonna take as much review once we, for the lack of better words, got the hang of it, and we know what we're dealing with, it's easier to review? Um, I'm just curious about the the fees.
Well, if they go for the CUP process of the twenty-five hundred. Um, and we added the seventy-five dollar renewal, because that's what our zoning um permit fee is. Um.
It would, the the twenty-five hundred dollar would certainly make it um something that it would happen to someone serious. That's interested in, um. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So are we saying that to change, go ahead and change it to?
That would be my thought right now. Again, it would be easier to go back and open it up to by right later. Than to leave it as by rights and have a whole bunch of issues and then try to make it more stringent later, but that's just. My thought and opinion, so.
Well, since we're gonna be holding up public hearing on the changes now, so time to do it, everybody.
And then we'll get feedback, you know, we'll hear what the the citizens, how they feel about that as well, not just. Personally, my thoughts.
Okay. Next item we have, discussion of the PUD ordinance.
This was on table from our last meeting. So we really didn't get into any uh discussion on it, that's to what changes we wanted to to see.
I'll I'll jump in if that's okay. One of, one of my biggest concerns and and one thing that I was really shocked at, uh, no minimum square footages. And I understand now that the Napolos have come in with plans for twelve hundred square feet. Is that correct? Not plans, but the the square footage they proposed on some of their dwellings is twelve hundred square feet.
They uh provided um that in the progress.
Right.
Uh, the minimum square footage, I wanted to say it was fourteen, I could be wrong.
I I I feel like I read twelve in the paperwork.
But they did um put the minimum um square footage in the progress, but there is nothing at the B B D, this is the minimum.
So at 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 this point, again, my my concern was. We did not have anything in there that listed any minimum square footages that we would like to see, and. I think the, and Mr. Sluter alluded to a little bit tonight, even with the, the one-bedroom apartments. Um, it's kind of checking the affordable housing box. Do do we really want subdivisions full of twelve hundred square foot houses? Um, I I just think that's a discussion worth having to try to set some minimum square footages.
I will tell you, I don't know if you were on the planning commission at the time, but we had um Renee Robinson with Habitat. Or Humanities Speak, um, and their affordable housing is fourteen hundred square feet, so that that is their minimum.
And and you've also got in your um cluster zoning. Some provisions in there, they can get a little bit higher density if they build some affordable housing, so that would check the box for Habitat as well. But to have a a premier subdivision at the corridor, the main corridor in the county with twelve hundred square foot houses. Uh, the the R-one subdivisions in the county, there's really. McCauley Park, Kennington, none, none of those guys have twelve hundred square foot houses, i- is that something? And I'm just asking the question, but it's worth the discussion, do we want to address that? And the PUD ordinance, because in the R-one properties that come in here, we have an opportunity to talk about square footages. In the PUD ordinance, it was left open-ended, and the Napolos have already. Put their application in, so we really don't have an opportunity to go back and change that at this point, so I think we need to look at that moving forward. Um. Along those lines, I also had um some concerns about the the three-story apartments. Um, I don't know if those. Um, I don't know if those being that's a PUD, so that falls under this this category, if any of those issues were addressed either. And we had conversation tonight about three story apartments. I still ask the question, and in the event of a fire, you know, air fire department cannot service those apartments.
We would have to depend on uh adjacent uh counties to come and help us with the ladder truck. They would all have to, of course, meet the building code requirements. They all would have these sprinkles. They'd have to have um fire department connections at each building. Um, and there's a distance that they have to be from each other. But yeah, if you take somebody that's not quick to move and you've got a bunch of apartments full of people, it is gonna be hard to get them down.
And apartments without elevators.
Even if they had elevators, you can't use them.
Some someone with some sort of disability on the third floor trying to get down to the second or the first, if the first and the second on fire, that could become an issue. An air fire department will be sitting there with the blanket on saying, John.
The PUD that was already included did have a height restriction, but it still doesn't address.
There's a height restriction for everything in the PUD. I think it's forty feet.
That's what I thought, but still they could be, they could change it. I don't mind changing the square footage, like I said, to fourteen hundreds. That matches the Habitat for Humanity and then keep it kind of the same at least.
The problem with uh can we specify forty feet for on the commercial? For example, if you have a big box store, that requires a a higher ceiling uh such as a hardware store or in the brick store or some so something of that nature. I mean, you go into a Lowe's, it's 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 pretty tall. I don't I don't know. But um but it could be pretty close to it. So I guess what I'm saying is if we drop it down to say twenty five or thirty feet, we we might be.
We could just say, well, forty might be just.
I I I would say for residential, do that and yeah.
That sounds good.
What you what you're gonna find out by reducing your height restrictions? And and this may be a good or a bad thing. I'm just throwing it out there. You're gonna find that these folks wanting to build apartment buildings, it it's not feasible to build two story buildings. If they can't get that third floor, and that's not their problem. I'm just throwing that out there that that's and making their decisions, we just need to understand that that's why all the plans you see are for three story apartments. And most complexes you go to are three stories. Just because the the density and and the cost.
But even if somebody wants to build townhouses, there's plenty of three story townhouses as well. Um, so.
Yeah, we we have three story houses in Kennington. The little skinny houses that are sixteen foot wide, some of those are three stories.
Yeah, they do. I forgot about that.
And we have a lot of two story houses that that the third floor is finished on. So again, just I I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, but I mean, we're here to talk about the PUD ordinance. My my big thing is square footage.
I'm a chairman, I'm a chair in regards to the square footage and and other issues. The the PUD ordinance requires a master plan. And the concept plan is done, then they're turned to supposed to submit a master plan. And Sherry, this, you and I had a disagreement for this, but um we didn't get involved in that. We really didn't get any opportunity to to really become involved in working with that master plan and talking about square footage and talking about types of houses and locations and things like that. So somehow we need to change that ordinance to get. I know we've talked before that Hanover County they submit a uh a site plan uh a week before public hearing or two weeks before public hearing, there's a planning commission. And then they have to, in two weeks, they have to make decisions and review it. So uh, we we need some better way for the planning commission to be more involved in development of the the master plan and how that turns out. And I'll say this, that's something that's been in my craw all along is the issues with entrances off or out through sixty. We got the drawn in last week. Been discussed tonight, but that drawings actually would require major changes in the interior that that we developed. Uh, and and we haven't had an opportunity to look at that. So it's left up to staff to do that, but at the same time, it's certain amount of things. Ellen has suggested that we hadn't gone, had more say. You know, they could have a thousand square foot if it was agreed to, but I don't want to say that guessing. We want to see a better type housing in there and another thing will be small life. It's hard to get a lot of housing. While I'm still on that subject, right down to on three six, the mechanics go to the new development down there. The houses are pinned to the car. They have on the road, fairly good sized backyard, but between how you got five foot from the property line to the house. You can't get a good size lawn mower.
You have a side loader garage and you can't get it.
Building garage back then. They don't have any alleys. We don't have any alleys in this. So how are people gonna uh get access? Because we're gonna have the same situation here with the narrow narrow lots, narrow distance between the houses. It's 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 gonna be a problem. Although uh I see all those houses in Hanover. They're built two, three weeks, weeks later, they're occupied. So if somebody likes it, somebody's been to be a customer. I would hate to have a have a lot that I couldn't have my share in the backyard.
With what you're seeing statistically, and and I agree with everything you said, but the the trends statistically are the the people pretty much younger than everybody here in the room, that the the ownership of of property is declining. They they want less maintenance. Uh, just pretty much come home, be able to cut the grass with a push mower, weed eater, if not have a lawn service and and that's the trend. You see an even um Warren Buffett's company Berkshire Hathaway. They they're going nationally buying up entire subdivisions, turning them into rental properties. And we've got one uh in Hanover that that they that group has actually come in and bought the entire subdivision to turn it into rental properties and that uh they will take care of all the maintenance, the grass cutting, everything. And that seems to be uh unfortunately, the the trend of where things are going. That's what people want. And I I'm not that I have an opinion one way or the other. I'm just, when you see, you're you're right, but it's just like in um in Central Crossing behind the Coral Wash, tho- those houses are are as fast as they can build them. They're finding a buyer of those houses. And some of those houses, I don't I don't know how many of you guys have gone through there. You've got a two story house with not a window on the side at all.
The ones on three six two that are with that, they're ten feet apart. They got hundred from apparently from that third.
And the the model house in the subdivision behind the Coral Wash, they they have nice windows and it's really dolled up. If you look at everything else that was built in there, and I believe that section is seventy five homes. It's uh my my concern is is some of this stuff that that's been approved or or maybe asked to approve. What what's what's that gonna look like five or ten years from now? And we we can't really get into property maintenance a whole lot, but if you have a bunch of small houses aesthetically, we're gonna see that from three sixty and that air air vision, I think with the orchards was a a commercial strip along three sixty that kind of migrated into townhomes and then single family. And that just back to the button where it's that just seemed kind of, and I asked those questions from day one. What are the square footage? Is what are the square footage is? And we were never given a good answer at the podium here. But I guess when they send their paperwork into you, that's.
There's no set square footage. It's like said, whether lot size, building size, but they did put that in their blockers. Um, that wasn't something they had to do, but because the question did come up, they did offer that at the proper. But that is certainly something that we could put in the P V B. Um, minimum lot size, minimum setback for single family, minimum setback for.
Just so I'm, they offered in their proppers that they proffered that they were going to build twelve hundred square foot houses.
I don't know if it's exactly twelve hundred, but I can pull it for you. Um, what, but they did specify the minimum square footage.
And they had, they had two.
I I mean, to be honest, I it for me, anyway, it's trade off. If it's gonna be a smaller house size, I want to see a better quality house. You know, with a, you know, with better siding, vertical siding, you know, little, you know, metal roof over the over the porch. If that, um, you so I I don't know, but I always feel like we need to be able to look at the at these as a case by case scenario because a different PUD, we might be looking at it at at it in a different way. Um, I I don't, I don't know. I I think that certainly a minimum square footage would be helpful, but I just don't know if we want to, I mean, do we want to put a a minimum fourteen hundred? Is that too much? I mean, how do we know what is that proper minimum square footage gonna be?
Again, I I think the whole purpose of the is the master plan. Or we should be working with the developer first to come up with a master plan that meets what we think is best with the community. And I, you know, I agree with the with the trend it is, but there are some places that we might not something a little more upper part, a little higher class development, a little better development and working with that message. We could require that, but again, having not had that opportunity to give it a course with that.
For getting interrupted, but like currently, we don't have that opportunity from the planning commission. Is that correct?
We do not have anything specified sizes.
So what I would suggest is hate to do this, but to turn it back to staff since we, I think we've all kind of said that we're either interested in some type of minimum square footage or as you referenced, some other kind of trade off of criteria um to make sure that it could get included in this because if we don't formalize some type of wording, we're still leaving it up to the the potential developer to propose and then work with you. And you don't have any way to say the benefit, like no, because we don't have anything set to meet requirements. So I I think that we need to let staff have an opportunity to come up with some type of wording for us to bring back to us. And in the meantime, if we have some type of specific criteria, we want to see, I think we need to give that to Sherry um to be able to include that. Um, I think that's the only way that we can know for sure um going forward with PUDs to to make sure that there's some type of standard that um we've all agreed to. Again, it's got to go to public hearing. So it's still, the citizens have to still give us our feedback. We want, you know, whatever we come up with. But I I I kind of, I I kind of agree with Mr. Callum that we do need to have something included. And I also see Mr. Sluter's point of, you know, that there might still be a trade off. So if you can, even if you have to go research some of the other counties, maybe you can come up with something.
So I have a question for Mr. Wagner, because I don't do not know the answer, but in the in the master plan, which I think you and I agree that we we probably needed a lot more input on that that we did not have. If the Napolos came in here and they proffered a thousand square foot houses or nine hundred square foot houses, what what rights do we have as the planning commission to deny that square footage if we do not have something in the ordinance as a God?
In a hood, we have a lot more control. We should have a lot more control. We don't have to. We can say we reject that, but we want to um, another thing that we really, I don't know that we specified. They they've given us a profit, but they haven't really specified out those profits for those properties to be used. But do we have anything that we require? Didn't we have something in there that that we should have any? Thousand foot, maybe whatever you call it.
Well, I I have one more thing to add to that, that to Mr. Sluter's point to yours, because you answered my question. If if they come to us with proppers and and we have a right to reject that profit. And I guess we do not have to give them a reason or we, or maybe we can give them a reason. Hey, it's it's too small. If if that is in fact the case, then that's our opportunity to, to Mr. Sluter's point to say, hey, we're not opposed to twelve hundred or fourteen hundred square foot houses, but we would like to see some vertical siding, some metal roofs. Certainly dimensional shingles or the free tab shingle, something, because I agree with Mr. Sluter, you know, a a well built fourteen hundred square foot house is is probably better than a fully built sixteen or eighteen hundred square foot house.
So I don't get to dictate what gets into the problem.
Yeah, I I think
We can't ask for what's being put up.
And then change in the PUD ordinance gives us more opportunity. The current PUD ordinance, part of it talks about the proper, refers to the proper, it says the proper should be approved by the board supervisor. Well, that wording is really correct. It has to be approved by the board supervisor, but because we can't prove it. But we should have, shouldn't have the opportunity to review those properties and that's why I'm basically so and we did not get that.
To 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 Ms. Ms. Height's point, and I understand that we cannot legally ask for proppers. I believe that's
There are certain that we can't, but
So how yeah, I'm 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 I've always heard that we cannot, but
You can't.
How how do we communicate um in the master plan or or standing here to hold him? How do we communicate to the applicant? We we do not want fourteen hundred or twelve hundred, whatever. If if we can't ask for anything that we're sitting here going, we don't, we don't want twelve hundred square foot houses, but we can't ask them to not do twelve hundred square foot house because we can't ask for the proper that. So how do we, how do we get around that? It kind of ties our hands.
Well, the profits have to be submitted before the public hearing. We've run into that before. Um, and of course, according to our county attorney, they have to be signed and submitted before the public hearing.
And 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 I think Mr. Wagner answered answered the question as good as it could be answered. Um, we just have to sit here and go, we reject the twelve hundred square foot profit. We can't tell you what to come back with, but we're not gonna accept.
Well, he here's what, here's where we had trouble with this, with this, you know, but that we're we're discussing Simon's track is that they never gave us any minimum square foot, square footage. And when we asked them specifically for this, they they said it was too, it was too early in the process for them to be, to know exactly what was going on. Right, so um, and I I'm looking at our ordinance right now and I do see where it shows that the the master plan has to have the proposed square footage of commercial buildings, but I I I mean, maybe it's in here, but I don't see where it asks for.
I don't think it's in there.
But it is for commercial buildings.
Yes.
And that's based on the square footage of residential.
But
And the same thing with architectural standards, it's for commercial. Now, they did put their um standards in their proppers. But we could certainly put all of this information in our P V B. So there's no reason why we can't.
So hypothetically, if we if we require that you have to tell us what the minimum square footage for residential is gonna be. And they get up here and they, for the public hearing, and they say, okay, here's our plan. This is the minimum square footage. If we just, at that point, we say, sorry, it's not gonna work. I mean, is that, I mean, we haven't I mean, is that, I mean, we haven't asked for a proper. So if they know that that's what, what, that's the grounds for us.
We should be in a position to negotiate with the developer prior to him submitting the.
So in the master plan, is that what you're.
Reject, but be able to.
So if we're involved with the development of the master plan from day one. We can ask for specific things during that process?
Caesar thing.
Okay.
And I think negotiating with the developer, the force walking that fine line between asking for a proper. And again, I, I don't know, I'm honestly asking the question. I mean, I've always understood that you cannot ask for proppers. So if they come in here with twelve hundred and we say, uh, that's not gonna work. Then it's a moving target that they come in here next month at twelve fifty and next month at thirteen until they get to a number that we do like.
Or is it, or if we say we would like to see minimum fifteen hundred square foot, is that considered a proper?
Is that asking for?
Proper is money. No, you can't.
I mean, my kids don't need a portion of.
One of the things we couldn't negotiate.
What if he could?
The, uh.
You know, the town, towns were sort of, you know, you know.
One of the things we couldn't negotiate with developers, they had a certain amount of houses.
A section of twelve hundred square foot houses. Good, good, great point, and, 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 and one of my, one of my arguments, uh, or discussions. Has always been, you know, the, the, the young people just getting out of college, you know, or maybe a kid in a couple cars. It's, it's, the bar keeps getting raised. Um, and, and everyone has a right to, to find a place to live and, and live close to their family and friends or whatever, so. No, I, I, I think that's a great point, is, is if you have it of six hundred and fifteen houses, two hundred of them apartments. And then you have a mixture, you know, i- if you just had a, a, a section of ten per, ten percent. No, I would.
Or you could do something like the.
That, that's a great.
The minimum square footage, living area is twelve hundred square feet. Or a minimum of ten percent.
It needs to be a percentage of the overall development will be twelve hundred square feet. And then the remainder, you know, we, or we have, you know, kind of migrating to larger houses. And, and I, I, I think it's wise to, to, to try to group those houses. Because in, in real estate, you get into the principles of progression and regression. You don't want a five hundred dollar, dollar house next to a two hundred fifty dollar, dollar house. You know, they need to be somewhat on the same block, same street, same section. But I, I mean, that was, that's a wonderful idea, and I think that kinda checks all the boxes if we can figure out a way to.
And the power did that, to communicate that to the developer without asking for a private, because I'm just trying.
We can put it in the requirement, isn't it standard? Like the minimum square footage of any home is twelve hundred square feet. A minimum of ten percent must be twelve.
So, no more than ten percent of the development shall be twelve hundred square foot houses. The remainder have to be fourteen, fifteen, whatever we wanna set at that. That way, we, we check the, the habitat, the young people. Um, and again, ten percent of the development, if you look at the master plan, that's, that's one section carved out somewhere. That I think is fair to everybody in the community.
Okay, so we also talked about the height. Um, and we do have that on page one fifty eight. All dwelling units, including but not limited to single family dwelling units and multiple family structures and all other commercial. And institutional uses, including combined use structure, may be constructed to a height of three stories or forty five feet. And y'all kinda indicated for residential, we wanted to reduce that.
If, if you take an apartment building, uh, if it's on a slab and it's three stories high, that's, that's three times eight. That's twenty four feet plus the roof. That's gonna put you up.
About thirty five feet max.
Yeah.
So do we want to restrict the residential to thirty five feet? Forty five, quite high.
They can still get three stories in, so then it wouldn't really, you know, couldn't, it would fix our problem we have now, but, but at least it would be less.
Yeah.
And would this, would this just be in the? P U D. So ou- outside of, eh, ou- on the A C district, if somebody wants to build a four story house, it's.
Oh, there's still a height restriction.
Oh, is that forty five feet?
Say it's forty.
I thought it was forty five. I mean, that's, that's, I, I, I can't think of any houses in the county that are over forty five feet.
And, and you know, our concern is coming up because our county currently can't support a fire and rescue. If there were any emergencies that come up, and I think in a, in a pod environment. You have a higher density overall, and so there is more of a concern from fire and rescue if it was a buyer for it to spread, et cetera. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence as far as what the height restriction is. Um, for the residential, um, but I think to some degree it makes sense in this application. So I don't know what the, the right. Um, footage to see, but I do think that it's something that we should consider. In the future, if we wind up with the county having, um, better fire and rescue equipment. That could support a higher, um. Footage, then we could come back and address it at that time. Um, but until we have that equipment, I think it's probably wise that we try to put something in place. Um, to put before the public, because again, it'll have to go to public hearing and they'll be able to give their feedback. Um, for us to revise any of the order of this. That's just my thoughts.
I'm concerned that. If we got called in by the. Other surrounding counties, that the time it takes to get, you need to get there. And be able to buy, to buy these apartments that are here now, uh, as tall as they are. You've gotta get a ladder truck from someplace to come in. How long can it take that ladder truck to get there? But right now. I really think we ought to be able to face in our decisions on what's available in this county. Uh, and if we only have twenty seven foot ladders, maybe we should be working toward larger ladder trucks. At some point in time, and I guess somebody said one of the problems we've gotten larger ladder trucks, we don't have the project. We'd have to build a new.
Can we advertise for a proper, like put it in our ordinance, so until we're proffered a ladder truck, uh.
Well, I worked on the project in North Carolina, that the, the developer gave the, the, uh, the county a ladder truck.
That's right.
And I wanna discourage the developers and us trying to be so restrictive. Um, but again, it's a concern if you don't want. For the decisions that we're making, we don't wanna put the citizens at risk.
But the question that I ask, and, and I ask it to the county attorney in kind of formal format. If we approved a three story building, and in the event someone on the third floor. God forbid, were, were to die or burn up in a fire, would we open ourselves up to any lawsuit of any sort? Because we approved it. But if, and I think the answer was, if it was properly sprinkled and it met the building code. Okay. So I mean, as long, as long as we feel good about that, and then as, as far as the height restrictions, I mean, I don't know, i- if. Trying to put an exact foot on it, you know, maybe, maybe we should look at stories. You know, if we don't want anything over three stories or anything over two stories. You know, that might be a better way, because, you know, different roof pitches, whether you have eight foot walls or nine foot walls, it could kinda get a little. Little too defined right there, but, yeah.
It sounds like we don't have three stories, we can put that in there.
For residential, maybe two stories or a certain height.
What, what you're gonna do if you say no three stories, you're, you're gonna cut out all the apartments in there, which again, I'm not. I have an opinion one way or the other, but that's, that's effectively what you're gonna do.
But in some townhouses as well, though, I mean. It, we're cutting off the whole, I, I, I would actually be.
The trend that's going on right now is a lot of the townhouses you're seeing because the garage is on the brush floor and then. Two up from there, so a- again, I'm not trying to put so much of a restriction on a developer. Again, our county needs to, you know, when we start. Having more of these come to the county, you have to have them, you know, the infrastructure, meaning the fire equipment to be able to support. In an emergency, um, but we haven't gotten there yet, so where's the middle ground to try to. Um, make sure that we're covering our bases, um, for now, and we can certainly come back and readdress. Changes in the future.
The, a ladder truck doesn't have to reach the roof of a apartment building, it just needs to reach the third floor window.
And of course, their hose.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be able to go all the way.
So, oh, yeah, I guess the, the hose, the hose would be probably the biggest thing, really, um, and how far of a reach would that have? Um. But, I mean, I'm thinking maybe we could lower the, the. The maximum height. To say forty or thirty five, does that do enough to?
A lot of your, your homes, three story are just under thirty five feet. Um, so I really think that, that you're a builder, I think thirty five would be adequate, even if they wanted to go three story.
I'm, I'm, I, I kinda asked the question, if, if, if the apartment builds, the code requires, uh, fire. Sprinkle systems, and, and that, that kinda takes us where we need to get to without having a fire truck. We already have a lot of three story apartment buildings in the county. We have at least two hundred more, if not three hundred, because they have that little flex space they put in there that could possibly be another hundred. So now we've got possibly three hundred there, the other projects. We told these folks tonight, hey, maybe three story in the middle would come back with two around the perimeter. I, I think that the building code covers us as far as fire suppression and, and doing air due diligence to take care of the citizens. So I, I don't know that I would really put it exactly.
So you don't think we would, we're, just leave it as is and?
That's kinda what I'm leaving.
At forty five?
I wanted to bring up, I found them, what the problems were, and they did put, like you said, stipulations, percentages. What it says was they got a minimum, but it is twelve hundred, the minimum gross floor area of each townhouse dwelling shall be twelve hundred square feet. The minimum gross floor area of each single family dwelling shall be twelve hundred square feet for one story. And fourteen fifty square feet for more than one story. Twenty five percent of the lots with the sin, single family tract shall be improved with dwelling units having a minimum square. Gross floor area of sixteen hundred square feet for one story and or two thousand square feet for more than one story, so they did.
So they kinda went down the road a little bit of what we talked about, so twenty five percent will be sixteen hundred or two thousand for two story. Right, so that section's good.
Yeah.
So if you take out the apartments and townhouses, which twelve hundred square feet for a townhouse is not that. Because most townhouses are twenty feet wide, two story.
Okay.
So then that leaves, you know, a certain percentage that, that they could do the twelve hundred square foot houses. I, I don't know what the math works up to be on that, but it's probably pretty close to that ten or fifteen percent, so we, we may be covered there.
So I guess do we wanna not change any heights, not change any square footages right now, leave it as is? Maybe you probably need to move on and, and get one more item in here.
Well, the last, I, again, I, I like the idea of when the master plan comes in here, if we, if we don't like something, we can say that's not gonna work. And then maybe have a little more control, so yeah, let's move on.
So what about minimum lot sizes? We do not have a minimum lot size or setback.
In the pod? So you say we do nothing, so there's zero, there can't be zero lot lines.
Um, well, no, I'm, well, it depends. I know a lot of them have a five foot side setback.
I would think everything detached would have at least five foot, like Mr. Wagner said, you can at least get a lawnmower.
Well, it just says, well, there is one area that says they have to, uh, yards located at the perimeter of mixed use development. Showing forth the setbacks of the adjoining. Or to the setback requirements of the P U D development.
That really doesn't say what that. I mean, if you have a five foot setback, that's ten feet between two houses, I think that's kinda what M- Mr. Wagner was saying. Going towards mechanics build something about eight to ten feet. And in a pod, that's to be expected, I mean, that's what you're, what you're buying into when you go in a pod.
I will pull hand over those two and, and take a look at it.
Yeah, I would, I think it's at least five feet. I, I know the only thing you ever see zero lot lines on a commercial. Right. Or attached.
And I'll work some on the master plan, like I said, I'll, I'll look at Hannah and a couple of others and, and see what they have.
Get more involved.
Que- question for you and Mr. Greenwood, um, something that was said here tonight that has been. Kind of mixed answers, but it, it kinda pertains to this project as well as, um, the gentleman who wanted the project on thirty. It has been said that H R S D can service everything that's already in their service area.
That's what I've been told.
That eight acre lot is in their service area.
That's.
So for him to say that he cannot do until late twenty twenty five. Either he, he was told that and believes that, or he knows that's really not the case. Because that piece of property has water sewer across the front and the back of it.
I'm gonna check with them, but it runs across the front. And that has been my understanding that if sewer, if it's in their serviceable area. Then they are providing sewer to the project.
So I don't know, I don't know if H R S D gave him misinformation.
I don't know.
If, if so, I mean, that, you know, in conversation with me, that has popped up a lot.
It has, but that is my understanding that if, if, if they're in the serviceable area, they have to provide the service.
What we were told is if they're in the service of the area, they've already applied for it, they can, but not new stuff. We were told that specifically too, and they were telling us that they're not gonna provide a lot of stuff, and we were wondering. Because Percy told us some of the stuff that's already been, it's not gonna be covered. But according to the contract, they have to.
What would that, this orchard project, it would not be covered according to that.
So it's different, like I said, we get different. Even though it's in, I mean.
Well, even twenty twenty five, they probably, I thought that they were.
And then we were told, because like I said, that's what we had posed session, and we're gonna take them to court, because they're saying they're not gonna provide service, I'm like. But that's another thing that.
So we're gonna run into a situation where we've approved something like the orchard, and then they cannot get the sewer they need. So then that sits there kinda stagnant for a while?
Yeah, because they keep pushing back the date, it was supposed to have been a lot earlier than that.
It must be early twenty twenty five now.
Well, it was before twenty twenty five originally. Yeah, now they pushed it to twenty twenty five, so who's saying they're not gonna push it to twenty twenty six?
See, we can get an update on all that, um.
I'll talk with Mr. Ashcraft on it, because like I said, my understanding is, if it was in the serviceable area.
Right.
They were supposed to be available, and I didn't say anything, but I didn't know what H R S D had told them. And I didn't say anything, but I didn't know what H R S D had told him. Um, but I do want to check on that.
I I think in, I think in your defense, you need to know because you are the first line of defense when people come in. And they ask you that question and you don't want to be in a situation where you go yes or no and be incorrect either way. So I think you need a definite answer to be able to because again, the the, any applicant, anyone looking to buy a piece of property or sell a piece of property is gonna come through your door and ask the question.
The piece you're talking about on thirty, it runs right across the, because I did check that, I mean.
Well, the the line from McCauley Park to Central Crossing runs right across the back of it.
Yeah, there's an easement that runs along the back of it.
And I, along those lines, you know, I don't know if everybody's aware of this, but that piece of property has central crossing on one side, the proposed R C I development on the other. The fifty acres behind it is the piece that King Liam County owns.
Oh.
That was basically designated as walking trails, park, whatever.
If you know they want to just develop along there, that would be a nice area to do some stuff.
Okay, with that. Guess we'll move on to the next title. Are you ready? Or do we want to push this off to the next one again? There's only one more thing. Right, I think it's just one, air and ramps.
I'll handle that.
We we covered that pretty good last night.
Yeah.
So, you know, at our last meeting, the waterfront lot came up, so we added uh, under definition, frontage lot for waterfront means the front yard of a waterfront lot is the yard that faces the shoreline. If more than one yard faces the shoreline, the rear yard is the one that provides access to the road and the front yard is determined accordingly. So with that, we do, um, and if you're shook with that, we'll leave that as the the change for the definition for frontage for waterfront. But when we have accessory structures that are built along the back of a road, we need to look at the setbacks for accessory structure. Maybe to be the same setback as the main structure from the road.
Your setback from the road, they have to agree, they have to stay within that state.
Yeah, so we need to add some vergage to that.
Yeah, but but if it's in the if it's in the backyard, the house faces the water, it's in the backyard, then they can build in that backyard.
Correct.
Within the.
Setbacks of the road and the sides of.
Side and.
Yeah.
What what setbacks are you using off of the road? I mean, obviously in the A C it's seventy five feet, but in the R one, it's forty feet, twenty five feet. So I I would say, I mean, in these waterfront subdivisions like Woodbury, again, I keep pointing to that, that's the closest one here. I mean, that that's not achievable.
So do we want to do it from a public road, but have it differently from a private road? The private lanes?
It's not, in Woodbury, it's not achievable to the construction back there.
Well, in Woodbury, half the houses there now have garages.
Yeah.
And the other half do not. The way the ordinance currently is written, the half that got in early are good, the other half are not. But you've got basically every other house in there, so to speak, that you've got garages ten fifteen foot off the private gravel road. So I like the idea of what you said, you know, obviously if it's a public road, public being a a B dot road, but if it's a private gravel road, I think it needs to be something, something less. I mean, it can't be right on the road, but I I would be in favor of, you know, something ten fifteen feet off the gravel road.
Well, the accessory structure setback is fifteen, like from the sides.
So maybe keep it fifteen foot off of the private right away.
Change it for public roads, it would need to be the same setback as it uh as frontage.
Yeah, but I was saying one of the concerns was a public road, somebody coming down the road doing the speed limit. But on a private gravel road, you would hope people would be going ten or fifteen miles an hour. And again, in a case like Woodbury, that they already have them already there.
But a lot of that. Is that, but I'm wondering is that?
It's a private road.
Right, yeah.
The garages that are already built to a grandfather, but anyone wanting to build a garage in the future would not be grandfathered.
And well, we had a variance come up last year, I believe. Wasn't it last year, off of Woodbury?
You did. On a new house, a gentleman wanted to build a garage.
Um, I mean, that variance granted, but there was no way for those to go, to make the setbacks. It was on the water, uh, the whole other side was brownfields, so we only had one spot, but.
So if we change that, does that address the speakers from last, last week?
Chelsea ones?
Yeah, the ones that.
I think it would.
Well, their problem was solved when you define the water side as being the front yard. That solved their problem. And and the conversation we had last time, we're not gonna encompass everybody. We 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 encompass the majority and the rest will just have to go to the V Z A and leave their pace.
Is everyone okay with that? All right, we got through it.
Well, uh, that's true. So um, right behind that on page seventy three, do we want to leave five and six like they are? We had kind of talked about accessory structures not being located in a front yard or a lot, less than five acres.
No, I think we wanted to change that because like a lot of lots aren't five acres.
The majority of the riverfront ones, yeah.
And and then the other thing was one accessory structure may be constructed in a front yard in a lot that is five acres or more, provided that the requirements for the front yard setbacks um, in Article six are met and the size of the accessory building are structured to not exceed fifty percent of the first floor of the main dwelling and not located directly in front of the primary dwelling in conformity with all other applicable provisions for these ordinance.
Well, that that statement's a little contradictory because you're saying the front yard is the riverside, but then you're saying it can't be built in front of the main dwelling. So it kind of, I and I, I personally would would agree that if we're calling the water the front, that you should not be able to build an accessory building in front of the house because you blocked your neighbor's view shed potentially.
And then we have under number six, any, for any lots where the rear and side yard are located in the resources protection area, one accessory building or structure may be located in the front yard in order to be located outside of the resources protection area. So we need to look at changing that a little bit.
Same thing you're saying there, that if if the house is a hundred and fifty feet off of the R P A and they've got room to put a shed in front of the house between the house and the water, that that would be allowed.
Only that and it to be.
I I don't think that's a good idea.
But I think, I think as as long as we've got the waterfront is the front of the house, the back of the house is the is out the road. And as long as the house, regardless of the size of the lot, as long as the accessory structure can be contained within the buildable area.
Yeah, that sounds.
Inside your side of the lot.
So we can remove number six, because we've taken care of that. Uh, and we'll change that.
Yeah, I don't think you put a five acre minimum because that that essentially just disrupts everything.
And uh, one quick last thing, I know y'all ready to get out of here. So we were talking about the density and so forth, and you know, in the P U D, it's a minimum of fifteen acres for apartments. And I'll try to get my hands on it real quick. Um, and then there is a density requirement wanted, um.
An apartment sits twenty four units per acre.
On page one fifty seven, um, minimum district size, the minimum district size is fifteen acres. Density is determined at the time of rezoning with compliance with the comprehensive plan, uh. Gross, the gross density of a single family residential shall not exceed five dwelling units per acre. And the gross density of attached units shall not exceed eight units per acre. And the gross density of a multi-family shall not exceed twenty four units per acre. Well, we don't have anything like that in a standard board that's outside of the P U D. Do you want me to try to look at putting some standards like that in?
So the case that was heard tonight, there are no density.
It should be. I mean, if if you're happy with the the density that we have in the P U D, we could just move some of the same wording over to the other if that will work.
Is it even still?
Except you want to lower density.
You want it lower. So do you have any suggestions?
One of the things he said tonight, and it is math, I was doing it quick in my head, wasn't quite adding up, but twenty units per acre. It's little over eight acres there and he's coming up with a hundred eighty five units.
But a hundred eighty and he's like eight point nine.
You divide, you divide nine acres into a hundred and eighty units. But that's considering the total, which I don't know whether it's in, in the definition of that in the state county, I don't know whether there's any.
Well, that's that, that's where I was going with that. Do you, do you take out the parking area and then use your billable area? Again, I don't know, but I think we, you know, this is gonna, this is not the the last time this is gonna come to us. And we've got a great opportunity to get in front of it.
So I'll, I'll add that to our.
Little research.
If that works for y'all. I think that's.
Well, it it shouldn't, it it it's and and I hate to point at other counties that that irritates me, but you know, the other counties, particularly Hanover and Henrico, th- those guys have formulas for that. We can take a look at what their formulas are and see how we compare to that and how we might need to tweak it a little bit.
Maybe even on New Kent, that's five, ten years ahead of, you know, where we might see ourselves in some areas, uh, see where they're. But there's that.
And that's, you you may know more about than I do. Uh, that's something I I do not see in New Kent a lot, is apartment complexes. I I can't think of any. Just.
Yeah.
They're getting a great big, what is the name of that store?
Buckies.
Oh, that's right.
Buckies is a destination.
They do have townhouses down the corner.
Like the the little village concept around the corner. But I just, I can't, I cannot think of any apartment buildings.
Oh, yeah.
Again, I'm I'm just going out of glance, but I'm just saying.
Right, yeah.
So moved.
Okay. Anyway, want your germ? Second? Get it to roll call.
Mr. Kellum?
Hi.
Ms. Height?
Hi.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Sluter?
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood?
Hi, we're now germ, thanks everybody.